...formal, so we don't have a causal order. But we should probably just do what you did for the public, so they know who's here because of your meetings. Uh, you can...
Yes.
Okay. Some people don't. We can introduce ourselves. Sue Warren, Historic Preservation Commission.
Vice Chair. Chair of Historic Preservation Commission, Cheryl Sees.
Justice Sullis, Deputy City Clerk, NHP Clerk.
Tom Gilbrecht, Department of Parks and Recreation.
Can we have Phil planning and zoning?
Cindy Eflin, Planning and Zoning Chair.
There is Sees planning and zoning.
Ben Ashar, Planning and Zoning.
And on the phone?
On the phone.
Tom Swan.
Sherri.
This is Sherri.
So that's Sherri Furlong.
Okay, so we have Tom Swan and Sherri Furlong and Mary Ann Benoit.
Benoit.
The E-N-O-I-T.
Okay, so that makes a quorum. You're a seven member.
And this is Valerie Kingland.
Hi Valerie.
And Valerie.
Hi there.
You have all seven.
You're very welcome though.
No, I do have five.
Let me know if you have any questions.
We want to have Fred.
Or Fred or Orwell.
Or Orwell. So yeah, we have five.
Valerie, Mary Ann, and Cheryl?
Sherri.
Sherri.
Furlong.
So that's, you have three on the line and three here and you're missing two more. You have eight.
No Valerie.
There's two on the line. Valerie is staffed.
Valerie's library is staffed.
Yeah. So we only have two on the line.
Wait, wait, wait. Not that Valerie can't be on here, but she's staffed for Historic Preservation.
She's their administration.
Oh, is she? Okay.
Yeah, she's our administrator.
I administrated these on to the city.
Okay. Thank you Valerie.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I think that the purpose of this work session was to have a back and forth and so that P and Z in Historic Preservation have a good working relationship and we understand your role, you understand our role and how we work together for the city. We have in front of us your references in the, in Chapter 15 of the code. And the main part, I think, is the beginning, the purpose. Historic preservation is necessary to promote the educational, cultural, economic, and general welfare of the community by providing a mechanism to identify and preserve the distinctive historic and architectural characteristics of Seward, which represent elements of the city's cultural, social, economic, political, and architectural history. You're also in the city code under Administration in Title II. And there's how you were established, which is also here in 15, terms of office and filling vacancies, meetings and quorum, which are really similar between the two commissions. Under powers and duties, it spans a little more on what the purpose was in Chapter 15. And it says, "It shall be the responsibility of the Historic Preservation Commission to develop a local historic plan that will include provisions for identification, protection, and interpretation of the area's significant resources. Such a plan is to be compatible with the Elastica Historic Preservation Plan and to produce information compatible with and for the Elastica Heritage Resources Survey." Number two, survey and inventory community historic architectural and archaeological resources within the community. Three, review and comment to the State Historic Preservation Officer on all proposed national register nominations for properties within the community. Four, act in an advisory role to other officials and departments of local government regarding the identification and protection of local historic and archaeological resources. Five, work toward the continuing education of citizens regarding local historic preservation and community history. Six, support the enforcement of the Elastica Historic Preservation Act, Elastica Statute 41235. Seven, review local projects and recommendations about the effect on properties identified in the local historic preservation inventory. Okay, and then there's a part about funds. So, okay. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, we, uh, the commission shall perform the following duties. Interpret the provisions of this title and make compliance determinations when requested by the administrative official. Review and act upon requests for variance permits, conditional use permits, and other matters required consideration under the Seward zoning code. Review the city of sewer comprehensive plan on annual basis and conduct a minimum of one public hearing. Said recommendations shall be forwarded to the council for consideration and promote public interest and understanding of comprehensive planning, planning, zoning, land management, and other issues relating to community planning and development. And we shall act and advise you to pass a review of the city council regarding the Seward zoning code, sewer comprehensive plan, official zoning map, official language plan map, and other duties as requested by the city council. And then we do also advise the Kenepe Peninsula Borough with planning, right-of-way amisms, uh, the Borough Comp Plan, Postal Zone Plan, and our Comp Plan. So, that being said, um, how can we, as a planning commission, help forward your duties and responsibilities and purpose?
Okay. Um, I believe that we put our plan together, like our historic overlay, and then we come to your commission, get your feedback on it. With your okay, then we would present that to the council.
Okay. Right now, um, on that map there, there are two sections in Seward that are currently in the historic district. And one of them is the downtown, mostly central business district, and one is up in a multifamily district, the Jesse Lee home, and then some of those apartments and vacant properties around it. So, you, you wanna make changes? You wanna add, what, committee? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, first of all, I'm really glad that we're having these meetings because you know the first step for us, because we've been talking historical overlay, signage projects, walking tours, all these different kinds of things. The 2000, the HP plan for preservation was already done in 2017. It exists, it's in the city, it's in the city reference, and it's a live, actual document. The next step of that is the overlay that Sue and the team has been working on as well. But the HP preservation plan that was referenced in our duties has already taken care of. I really appreciate the fact that we're working together and we already have several meetings set up because we have a joint responsibility and we both have the capacity and the responsibility of providing advisory comments and so on about economic preservation, all those types of things for the better in Seward, to the city council. So that's why I'm excited that we're working together. Instead of us surmising in our meetings like, hey, I wonder what planning and zoning would take. So now we're together, so we really appreciate that as well. But I just wanna make that point, the 2017 plan is in place and we're using it to reference. It's a long worked-on document. I was there on the tail end of it when it was done.
Chapter eight in that Seward plan, Chapter eight in that Seward plan is approved by the city council, gives us a list of things that we were supposed to do that have already been previously approved by the city council. One of them was historic overlay. Part of that earlier process, people were left out. So I think part of the issue here is to make sure that we're all on the same page, including the city staff, including the Community Development Department, before something gets put before council and nobody was involved. So we don't wanna make that mistake again. The overlay has been worked on. I had a personal crisis, and so it was left to linger a bit. I did do a presentation of planning and zoning several months ago, but it is still in process. I have also extensively talked with some of the building code people, so I just need to meet with them so that we can have some ideas about what we need to present to you. Okay. When you say overlay and you say plan, are we talking the same thing? No, they're two different things.
No.
Okay. So you're talking a different overlay than we currently have?
Yes, we'd like to expand it.
What we have is in 2017, there was a Seward Historic Preservation Plan that was presented to the city council and voted and approved.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you're aware of that. Yeah. Then part of that, part of that in Chapter eight was a list of recommendations that, again, were approved by the city council. One of them was a historic overlay, which is what I presented to you.
Right.
Okay, so they are two separate documents. Now, overlay to me is an overlay on a map that shows districts.
Yes.
And so... And this has design standards and guidelines within that district. It's based on what Juno has done.
But I think what she's trying to get at is that she wants to know what historic overlay district is.
Right.
On the map.
Right. Right. It, in the, okay.
So I think I can, the 2017 plan was worked on for several years so that it could lay out what things should be preserved and why we should preserve them.
Preservation.
Very long document. Those however, a lot of those things were recommendations that we use to guide ourselves.
Right.
Then we need to do some, okay, great, you have recommendations, so somebody maybe lives in Seward or whatever, and they're like, hey, I'm dying of this house, what do I do? What kind of guidelines are there? Well, I have some recommendations according to the 2017 plan. Our property's been identified in a certain way, but I'm wondering, am I on some kind of overlay or am I under some kind of conditions? And then that's the next step is then how you do that, so then we come up with these conditions, which are based on a lot of precedent from other places and so on, but then they need teeth. And there's no teeth unless I'm in zoning.
Okay.
Then I explain that.
Are you married?
You did.
So as far as what we would look at, we look at what's in the code. So we've done the work to establish an overlay, now we have to do the work to integrate their recommendations into...
Okay. And I think you're absolutely correct. That's the next step.
Except that, except that we're looking at expanding the overlay district. This is where you come in, because we would have to come to you and see if you think it's feasible since you guys are in control of, you know, people and their properties, you know, what happens to a lot like what we just went through with Chrissy.
Well, it's, um, zoning is different than the historic overlay.
Right, I know.
Okay. So what's underneath that historic overlay could be zoned in many different ways.
Right.
Okay. And so, under your purpose in Chapter 15, it says that, that you promote education, cultural, economic, and the general welfare of the community by providing a mechanism to identify and preserve the distinctive historic and cultural characteristics of Seward, which represent elements of the city's cultural, social, economic, political, and architectural history.
However, we can't preserve, if there's no, if there's no teeth, how do we preserve? How do we tell somebody that they're safe?
Well, if, if you pick, there's this list of the historical sites.
Updated, but go ahead.
Okay. I asked that we got copies of this because if somebody's on this historical list, then you as a commission, if they wanted to change something, you could bring it to us and we'd work together to figure out how to get preservation of distinctive historic and architectural characteristics. But in, in, that could happen with an expansion of the historic overlay of the areas. That could happen.
Yeah.
So if you say, um, I'm trying to think of a house that's not in that district.
What is it?
The Scattered World House.
Okay, Millionaires Row, yeah. Millionaires Row, like the Dr. Bell's old house, the corner, the DNB, the big white house. That is not in the overlay. And, yeah, um, so if somebody wanted to preserve that, or if somebody wanted to tear it down, I don't know what teeth the city has to make them preserve it. Right.
Can I say here at some point in time?
Please, Tom, go ahead.
Okay, so I think some of this that we're talking about comes from our last meeting, with our joint session with city council, in which we brought up the fact that we would like to see some codes and ordinances put in to protect our downtown historic area. Right now, we have a historic district, but it really has no teeth whatsoever. Nobody can do anything they want with any building. The only building in town that an owner actually has, from my understanding, has some responsibilities if they've ever gotten a federal grant for the protection of their historic site. Otherwise, all, everything we have in our code just says, this is just for information only. So we have some overlay districts, we have some different things in place to give us a footing to do things, but I think the city council have given us historic preser, uh, us planning and zoning some, um, guidelines or some, you know, push to start doing something about codes and ordinances to protect our downtown. And that's what I thought this meeting was the beginning of, so that we can work with historic preservation. When I was on Historic Preservation, we actually looked up and found some guidelines and ordinances from other cities, doing simple things to start saying, what can we do to protect the historic image? At this point in time, I mean, I just gotta figure out what we wanna do with downtown. What do we mean by protecting some, you know, meetings, community meetings with the business owners on what's possible and what would be acceptable.
So, Tom, I think...
And, you know, to me, that's it. Go ahead.
You're, you're farther ahead than me, I know for sure, because I've never been on the Historic Preservation Commission. I've never been to a Historic Preservation Commission meeting. You were on it, so you're, you're a step farther than me and maybe a couple others that are on the commission. And I've got some heads shaking here. And so, um, so, yes, 'cause we, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, do write a resolution recommending an ordinance change that goes to council for an ordinance change. And you stated that when you were on the Historic Pres, you came up with some things and Sue, and, and, did you work with Tom? Is that, no? You, you're after Tom? But we were going down the same path. Down the same path. So they have now got this plan that they brought to us at a meeting and it is thick. Um, not a book, but it's there. And, and, there's, there's probably a few things in there that we can pick out, but let, let me ask the commission, the Historic Pres Commission, how many downtown folk came to your meeting when you were...
None. We, none. We do need to encourage public involvement.
Right.
But I, I did wanna say, in conjunction with what Tom shared, Jackie Wilde came to a meeting and she explained to us how we were going to need to go about creating code, which is where the idea came to have these joint work sessions with you in order to create, you know, either incentives or regulations to protect our historic district.
Steve?
Let me reference a real specific example.
Okay.
We purchased the government cable house, which was Seward's first communication, the telegraph communication for the entire Kenepe Peninsula.
Yeah.
Built by US Civil Corps in 1905. We bought it in 2014. We came in and we said, oh my gosh, we want this thing to look exactly like it did the day that it was in 1905. That's what we've been working towards. Just so happens we love old houses, we love preservation. There was nothing, if I'd wanted to, I could've torn it down entirely. I built whatever I wanted to, and that would've been a shame because you would've lost a great piece of Alaska history. Back to the matter is, is that we asked Robert, I was like, well, don't we have to like do something? Like, is there any guidance? And it was like, there is no guidance from anyone to tell us what we can and we can't do. Now, Tom Swan specifically mentioned that there's guidance and there is. So when you take a grant, you gotta basically stay on the section 106 or something for 10 years.
A federal grant.
Federal grant.
Yes.
But 10 years from now, whatever, 10 years from now, someone else, it won't happen because Les Otter's a cheat disown. But if I ever was to sell the house, anyone could do whatever they wanted, regardless of the fact that at some point in time, there might've been matching grants or other things to work on the house over the course of the 20 years, whatever, long ago. So what we're trying to do is have some kind of lasting covenants, if you will, some kind of review, where when you come into a town and you say, I'm gonna buy the X, Y, Z house on Millionaires Row, and they go, and people will ask, they'll be like, well, what does that mean? And then somebody goes, well, what it means is you really should respect X, Y, and Z, and then we're also able to give them some guidelines, which is what the overlay explains that says, like, for example, if I wanna change...
The plan. Yeah, the plan.
If I have the plan, if I wanna change a window in the back of my house so nobody sees it, whatever, so that it can be more weatherproof, but I can't change the front of my building because it would, the public should be enjoying it as it originally was. So that's what that particular plan, the overlay, and that particular information says. If you're coming to town and you wanna buy the X, Y, Z house and it's in this district, we're really asking that you follow these guidelines. How you put teeth into that, I don't know, that's part we gotta figure out. But that's, that's what we're saying, because there was no guidelines.
Kelly?
Um, I don't know what all the different designations are, but in, is there anything in the state or the federal historic buildings? I don't know what you can get, like you can get like a national historic building recognition or is there anything like that that would protect this building?
Actually, in, in the, in your packet, Jackie did a great thing on page 20.
21.
Yeah, 2021 through 28. In there is a reference to a book that would be very helpful. Carol Brizwell sent up these, um, codes from the Juno zoning code definitions.
And...
And then, and then Mary Ann came up with a really great idea, and that was to look up and research the Secretary of Interiors', um, you know, regulations or suggestions.
That was already done by Juno, which is why we stole these outright and with Juno's permission.
So are there...
Because a lot of that research had already been done, so we just cut to the chase.
Are there designations then that people could get in Seward that would protect their buildings forever?
Yes.
No.
Just during, while they own it?
There are none.
Just while they own it?
Correct. We were a national register property when we bought it, because we didn't have any reans or anything, we could do whatever we wanted to. So no, there are none. That's why we're looking at Seward to say, you come into town and they're like, hey, is here this plaque right here? Well, number one, nonpunitive, to maintain this plaque of being historic property, you need to do X, Y, and Z, and we love this place, there's pictures of it at the library, there's this, there's that, Historic Preservation Commission has recognized it as being a significant one and it's part of a historic overlay. So before you do anything, can you talk to us? That's the first step.
First, they should know that before they buy the building. I would, I would say that, that, you know, you need to know what you're taking on. So, this document.
Yes.
Historic.
Inventory.
Site inventory.
Yep.
So, if, how did things get on this list?
Okay, let me see. Linda, um...
Linda Lassota.
Yeah. Yeah, Linda Lassota. So she gave me what they had, and it wasn't in any kind of a database. So I recreated it into a database. This is not it. And then Iris included document numbers. And we are pretty sure we've got all of our historical property from, you know, 1903 through 1941, and now it's time to begin the next 50 years. And I will, I told Eric that I will send him the most current historical site inventory. It admittedly has not been worked on since August of 218, I believe.
Okay. Totally understand that. So, if you're on this list, we could make a code change that then would protect the preservation of what's on this list. Or the requirement that if there was a major change to what's on this list, they had to come in and fill out some sort of a...
Yeah.
Permission, like a conditional use permit or a variance or, or some document to say they wanted to change it. Right now, I believe I know someone in town who's on this historic register who wants to put a window in, and, uh, they didn't have to fill out any paperwork, I believe they asked someone on your commission, can we put this window in? And someone on your commission said yes. That would be me. I was, I was trying to, I was trying to be anonymous there. No, no, I'm, I'm trying to be thorough. No, and so, so that seemed a little like, oh, you, you can just ask one person? That's a little, that's a little, that's not exactly what happened, that's why.
Right, right.
But, but the point being is that he, because it is, because the building is historic, he wanted my opinion on what he could do to enhance a space and still make it within historic guidelines. That was our discussion.
Commission, real simple, one problem too, is that there's a tremendous amount of misinformation. So I've spoken to people who have historic homes and they go, I don't want any piece of that because I can't do anything. Like, actually, you can't.
Yeah.
Like, they don't even know that they could take a window in their back bathroom, whatever they want to.
The way you explained it is not the front of the problem.
There's so much misinformation out there.
Right.
That part of it is just going to people and explaining that, no standards.
Which is what I did.
Because there's so much misinformation, people are afraid of it.
And so, to maintain the historic transom, put in a window, it will match what's on the other side, it will balance the building, it will serve his purposes, but we maximize saving that historic transom.
But, and so this would be on us in one of the education parts, to educate the public. But I like your idea.
Yeah. Of adopting.
Well, yes.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's how you get a person that, that owns one of these or wants to buy one of these or inherits one of these to, to know that they have to do something. Because other, if we just put it in, in the code and don't have a vehicle where we can get them in to educate them, because as you see, we, we have no members of the public here tonight.
Right.
I mean, we could have members of the public now. We used to have members of the public. Yeah, we always encouraged it. It's happened a lot. But, um, but, but if we, if we put something into a, I, you know, I don't like red tape any more than anyone else, but if it, you know, if we have a simple form that would just get them into, we wanna put a window on the backside. Juno has an application form, it, you know, but the point being is that, who does that go to then? There, you know, it, we, we have to decide on the process.
Well, I think we can...
And then, and then we, we'd also have to have some of these codes that then are code.
Right.
Because right now, this just says, sometime in the past 200 years, you did something in your property that was something we wanna preserve. Agree 100%. So, we do need some, so if we can all dig out that document, which I know I still have mine, is there some? Um, there's one here? Yeah. I will see if this, we've...
Mine has it at home though.
Yeah, mine's at home. We, 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 Mary Ann Benoit, while I was away, otherwise engaged, um, had, uh, updated this. So what I would suggest is if we can get copies to them. Okay, okay, wait now. This is the new... Wait, 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 wait. You have a plan that was adopted by the city council and now you changed it.
No. Now, this has not been merged into the Seward Historic Preservation Plan.
Oh, this is a draft.
This is what we're wanting to do with you before we go to council and get their approval on this. But what Sue is saying is, the copy that you have was straight off, um...
Cut and painted.
Yeah, I, I remember the whole sketch. And this one is edited, so it's, it's more for our town.
Okay. Yeah, so good. Exactly. So if you want, we can get you a better copy. Yeah.
Can you email that to us as other things?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Can I, sorry, can I make some comments?
Yeah, is that Mary Ann?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Okay, well, I just wanted to, uh, do a little bit of a minute, 'cause I, I think pictures have come. We started off the conversation, you were asking, how can we work together?
Yeah.
So committee, wait, I see it, and I'm barely new in the commission, so please stop me if I'm speaking out of turn here. But in 2017, we came up with a Historic Preservation Plan that was approved by the city council. That's kind of like our basic guideline, or our basic roadmap of what we're supposed to be doing.
Was it codified? Was it codified? Excuse me, Mary Ann, was it, was it codified? Yes, no, I don't believe in what, was it? I don't think so. So is it, is it, is it part of the comprehensive plan? Like the Parks and Rec plan is part of the comprehensive plan?
It should be. I don't know. It was approved by the council, I don't know if that means.
It is mentioned in your comprehensive plan.
There you go.
Standalone plan.
Yes, okay, good.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so that is basically, we just got the picture plan. What we are working on now is kind of standards and guidelines to help implement that plan and actually carry out the things we said we would do in the plan. That's what Sue and I have been, have been working on, which she was just holding up. That plan, I think, is what could be the educational piece that could be helpful for the public, because it gives guidelines that says, okay, well, if I want to restore historic buildings, how do I do that? What's acceptable? Or what if I want to put a new building into a historic district, or what if I want to rehabilitate something? So it provides these guidelines on how to go about doing that. And this whole document is based on what they're doing already in Juno, and our goal was to basically take that as a template and update it to make it specific for Seward. So what I was thinking would be great was for us to be working together with planning and going to see how, you know, what we have, the things that we have put in these standards and guidelines, well, they work, if we go along with these existing building codes. If they don't, are there things we can change so that makes it easier? So if somebody does want to restore historic buildings, they can do that, and it's not super expensive. But we try to, together, work together to make it as easy as possible. Another way I see that we could work together is that we have this historic overlay that we're working on, and I think there's probably just opportunity to have the discussion and say, within the downtown historic district, is the existing code compatible with the historic district? And if there's places or reasons that it's not, that's a big time to have a discussion and see if we can figure out how to make it work for everybody so that it helps protect the historic properties, but also works with other uses that people would like to do. And then the third thing that I think is a good way to work together is I know that there's a comprehensive plan in the historic plan to reference, but I feel like the historic, the things that are in the plan could be, I guess, more part of the comprehensive plan. Like you, I know you guys go through checklists that you look at in that plan when you're, you're going to make a change, or you're reviewing, like an application, and it seems like the historic preservation part of it is not quite in there, so I'm hoping that they need to work together to make that more inclusive and comprehensive. So those are just kind of a picture thoughts, and I realize we're kind of going into the weeds a little bit, like, what would we do if this specific pro, you know, property that's on this spreadsheet, which I think is just kind of a working document for us right now, but it seems like there's lots of other things we should probably do first.
Helen.
This is Commissioner Thurlow. I, I wonder if I could put a question, it seems like a good kind of a question here.
Go ahead.
What I'm wondering is, Jesse was pretty specific about the need to consider codes so that we are effective commissions, and I wonder how to go about that? Is that something that the historical preservation should come up with a suggestion for a code and then run it by you, or how do we proceed with this?
Well, that's a good question, and so there are parts of your draft, which is not your plan, but your, your recommendation, your pl, plan, has parts of Juno's code in it, okay? So if those are some of the changes that people agree upon, then it goes through a process where it had probably, I, I don't know, I think the historic preservation has sent resolutions to council.
Yes, but.
This would be a resolution that then has to be followed up by an ordinance. So the planning commission can approve an ordinance recommending a code change, then if that ordinance goes to the council for an introduction, and then a second public hearing, and then it's adopted, it can be amended at that time. But then, that's, that's then the rule in town. So if you want to say, in the historic preservation district, if you have a false front on your building, you will maintain that false front for historic character. If that's in the code, then that's part of the code. It won't be part of the building code, because the building code is adopted, it's the international building code. So when we start looking at a lot of these things that aren't structural, which Gary can help with, but aren't structural, we'd have to, you know, we'd have to be outside of the building code, because the building code trumps everything else. So, you know, so it, it, it's got a process, and I, I think, I don't know if the historic preservation has ever brought forward a resolution recommending an ordinance. So we do that all, I mean, that's how we make code changes, and we're mandated to go through Title 15 and, and make recommendations for changes. Eric has his hand.
So I would say that the first step in the process is what you're doing right now, because you're getting together to talk about what you might want to change in the code, and then HP would want to bring to the PNZ, or I guess staff could help HP put together that, to bring it forward at, to at PNZ.
Their staff? Their administrative staff? Because you, for us, they have their own administrative staff.
Right. They would have, we would have to be able to review it so that we could, so they would, they would bring it to the PNZ, we, I think work sessions would.
Right.
Be able to work it out, kind of like we did with the cell towers. We'd have our lines that we, we cross out, and then PNZ would take it, you know, would make the recommendation to city council after that.
Okay, yeah. Helen, that sounds like a good point. Helen.
I think, maybe I'm misunderstanding something here, but maybe our first step is to decide what we want to impose that you use either incentives or regulations on. And I liked Cindy's idea of having it go to either your updated list from 2018, which seems more likely than this, but a list of some sort that actually identifies the buildings that we want to preserve. Including all the buildings in a zone seems a little bit.
A district is not a zone.
A district, sorry, a district, seems a little inefficient, because there will be, like, you know, buildings in there that may not fit, and it also leaves out some historic buildings that are not in that district.
This building right here is in the historic district. It was not built to any, I, I, I don't.
And maybe this is a building we want to preserve for the future generations? I'm not sure, but.
But, but their, their, their purpose is to identify and preserve his distinctive historic and architectural characteristics. That's.
Preserve.
Identify, which is this, identify is this, preserve is don't let, don't let somebody tear down Millionaire Road. Well, and, and the other thing is, one of the things that we defined in this particular set of guidelines is, when you look at the downtown district here, you've got, there was a fire in 1940, so we're not trying to return everything to look like Brown and Hawkins. We have buildings where they are at, at the time they were construction, constructed after that fire in 1940. One of the things I've always thought is, I hate to lose the Showcase Lounge neon. I mean, it's not, it, it is historic, but it's not Brown and Hawkins. So you take each building where they are, so there's, and, and a lot of the buildings there at the core were historic, but they've seen a lot of change over time. Is Thorn's on there?
Yeah.
Okay. I just love the name.
I just like, I like the idea of having specific buildings that we're trying to preserve, and maybe the only part of town, I feel like maybe we could be a little bit more exacting to preserve a whole area would be that Fourth Avenue line that still looks like it's a historic area.
Or the third.
Uh, fourth, I'd say.
Fourth.
Between Washington and back.
Down town.
That could be. Mine is, mine, mine would be to include Millionaire Road.
Well, but then also have, like, specific buildings around town.
Well, yeah, that would be good.
I totally like what you're saying. By definition, by that list where it started, by definition, it's a rolling 50 years. So in other words, what we would define as being anything historic is anything over 50 years as of today. But five years from now, everything is over, it, it starts becoming historic, it's a rolling 50 year is what, when we determine. So that, that, that gives you a very specific, so to your point, if there's something that was built in 1980.
1970.
I'm getting close. In 1997, it's probably not.
Careful, Tommy. No, in 1970, something built in 1970, like the Harbor Masters Building in the harbor, which was about that size, I think. Well, and City Hall was built in 64-ish, 65, and so those, if we're got a 50 year, those would now be on it, and I'm not sure they're on it now, even though they're not the old Brown and Hawkins architectural design.
But that's a, that's a.
I would probably, I would probably begin doing a separate, a next 50 years, I don't think I'd blend it into this.
Oh, Tom, go ahead.
Okay, so, you know, the historic inventory, is any building that's over 50 years? I think that that listed there. Historic district, and we could take the downtown, you know, it can be a period of historic significance, which would trump that 50 year thing. So if you say you're downtown, and one of the multi-use buildings was put in it, of the, uh, the parks, the National Park Service did a big study, and it came up with some actual dates that were the downtown area's historic significance, and that was about 1935, 30 to 35, which is when Brown and Hawkins and those buildings kind of went in. And so, I mean, if you have a guideline, instead of just saying, hey, you know, everything over 50 years, because that's not what we're looking at, we're looking at something that says, you know, the historic significance, and if something was built later on, you know, do we want to have, now I'm getting into my opinion, my opinion is if something in that Fourth Avenue area is going to have a new face lift, it's going to match a motif of the time period when the downtown is at its most significant.
Well.
The problem with that is.
One of them, that's places that were in a fire. That's crossing any.
Say it again, sorry?
That, that's not following the purpose of the historic preservation, theirs is to identify and preserve the distinctive historic and architectural characteristics. So what you're saying is, somebody wanted to buy the Sea Life Center lot, the old arcade lot, by Solis Building, by the National Park Building? If they wanted to buy that and build something on it, with, with your opinion, they would have to build it to some era?
Well, not at this point in time, there's no, no requirement of that.
Right, no, but what I'm saying.
But we're going to try and maintain what was given to us by the, by the city council, was what can we do to maintain our historic integrity of the downtown? The historic integrity of downtown is a 1935 motif, when a lot of those buildings were in the fire and so on and so forth. But it still is what we want as a city, I mean, you're putting a very negative, or not negative, very limited view of what responsibility of, of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Well, okay, that's, that's exactly.
That can be, that can be something a little bit different than that.
That's exactly what I'm doing, Tom, because that's what's in code, and what I'm thinking is, do we need to change the code to include what you're stating, which is not just preserving what's on the ground, but setting architectural design standards for what is to be built in the future in this certain district? That's.
Well, and I think that's what we have, I think that's what we have going on, as far as what the city council was talking about at our last meeting. What are we going to do to preserve what's, you know, our historic area?
Okay, it's just not in code yet. Right, that's. It's not in code yet, and so that would have to be the first code change to broaden the purpose of the historic preservation part of Title 15, which is, is a goal of planning and zoning, to always update Title 15.
Correct.
So if we needed to go to design standards, then that's different than identifying and preserving architectural characteristics.
Well, it's, it's, it's under the same umbrella, but yes, but it doesn't matter.
Well, well, it, it would matter if you're telling somebody they can't build, build the building like Petrol Marine.
Well, correct, but I think if you want, this whole conversation was about trying to get code to protect, so yes, we would have to get code. I, I'm not sure where, where some of this comment's coming from.
This is Commissioner Thurlow. Can I, I, I just want to support Tom, if I can, a little bit.
Sure.
Um, uh, I guess I have the same opinion, and I, I want to, this is a little bit off topic, I think, but I, I want to encourage the city of Seward, if we want to promote economic growth in Seward, we would do well to do what we can to preserve that era, I would say from, maybe 1906, 1910 through 1935. If we could agree at the city that we have a goal to create this atmosphere, it would do an awful lot, in my opinion, in promoting economic activity in Seward.
Wait, and, and to turn it on, I mean, that comes from a study that was done, I don't know if it's a study, a survey that was done, I think by the Chamber of Commerce, and on a list of what people like about Seward, the most, and, and like the top item that comes up is our historic downtown. And, I mean, the comment is just made, it's exactly what we're trying to do, is economic development through historic preservation.
Could you define your period of significance? Because a lot of the buildings down there are going to be from different periods, that does not mean they're not historic, they're just from different periods. Okay, I think we defined it in here as from 1903 to Thorn, which was like 1950, was the period of significance for the buildings that I saw downtown, but that can easily be changed. Nothing is in stone. But you define your time period. And then, and then if someone wanted to build a building in the historic district, they would have to follow the designs of 1903 to 1950, and someone would have to say, yes, that fits.
The facade, they wouldn't have to, they wouldn't have to construct the entire building.
And, and would that as part of the Juno code, that it's just the facade? Yes, it's really, it's, when you look down the street, they want to see the street skate.
I think, I see what Tom's saying, and I think that's a really good long-term goal. I think the first thing you guys need to do is pick what buildings you want to preserve. And my understanding, if I have this right, is you guys want to basically preserve everything in that pink outline on the map.
Well.
I've got it back in here, but yes. They want to expand it, too.
Yeah.
Daniel, because I think you're going to get a lot of pushback from people who are not currently in historic buildings, if you're going to try and put some sort of, like, standards on what they can do with their buildings when they're not basically one of these listed on here. So while that might be a really good long-term goal, like, we're going to make all of, you know, Fourth Avenue from where, like, where it's at Washington down, historic, it has to have certain facades, maybe the first step would be Jefferson down there.
Jefferson all the way down.
Then, maybe the first step would be this, an education on people who actually own these buildings that you're most concerned about in the near future, with, you know, something that means they can do to preserve them properly, and then move on to, like, expanding that from individual buildings to small areas, Millionaire Road, Fourth Avenue. from individual buildings to small areas, Millionaire Row, Fourth Avenue, and then maybe bigger areas, I don't know, in the future.
I mean, I think the thing that you have to accept with historic property is that they're expensive. And that has to be addressed. I feel very strongly that there's grants and there needs to be a process where people who own historic buildings can access some of this national state and other funding because there's no way to get around it. Historic buildings are expensive. And if you own one, I own one, I understand that.
I would like to interrupt on that.
Go ahead, Tom.
Well, one thing that I kind of disagree, I do think we need to have a historic district, even if it's kept small to the downtown, Fourth Avenue, where you start with, then it can be expanded in the future. But when you go to that thing where you're just talking about the facade of a building, you're not talking about added cost to the building owner. I mean, my building, which is the old flat building, which is the I O L building before that, Swan West End, across the library, I put an historic front back on that. It did not cost me a dime more to put that front on rather than a different front.
But I don't know that you can always just assume that.
And if it's sold to the businesses in the area, right now, people say, as soon as they hear historic anything, they, oh, you're going to drive my costs up.
Yeah.
And that's a trick to ask done. And that's why, in my opinion, at this point in time, is start working on trying to find some ordinances, codes, that bring in the fact that says, hey, we're only working with a facade. We're only working with a small area to start with. And by bringing that forward and saying, hey, if these are what we're looking for, you're going to start getting the business people involved. And they don't come to your meetings because right now they don't think anything's going to affect them. As soon as you say, we're going to put these codes in, they'll show up.
Okay.
That's where you start talking about the economic advantage and stuff like that.
Yeah. Tom, we've got like five minutes and we have to reset the meeting for planning and zoning. So what I'd like to have, Eric, do you have a copy of that draft?
I will get a copy of that.
Could you send it to the planning commission? And we'll look at the codes that your commission put together from Juneau that have vet a lot of research and done. And it is the new expanded overlay, which we probably don't want to get bigger yet. But that'll be our starting point.
That's a starting point.
And we'll set, maybe another work session where you guys could pick maybe one, two, three of the major things to start. Because I don't think we can write one ordinance to cover everything.
Everything in there.
But something to start and maybe start with an easy one.
I'd like to, Cindy, where you started talking, you know, where you'd have like a page, you know, kind of a checkoff list that leads up to the ordinance so that people have that to go by.
That would probably be after the ordinance. So if somebody wanted to build on an empty lot because some of these things won't be in the building department. And, you know, they are part of the city and they should know, but they won't. So if the community development has a piece of paper where they can go, these are the codes that would affect you building on that property. I would say. Okay. All right, you got it, Eric? Your next step, send out that draft.
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much for meeting with us.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for all your work and for reintroducing what you do and your draft and all the work you've.
Well, I think we've always just wanted to work together. And Seward's a great place. We want to keep that way.
Yeah.
And we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Long hours.
Did you also send us?
Thank you. Yes.
Hi.
I told Eric that I'm going to do that.
Yeah, Eric will send it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is 6:58.
6:58?
6:58.